Okay, welcome everybody to the November 2nd, 2021 meeting of the Rhinebeck Village Planning Board. The first item on the agenda is the public hearing for Anita Killian, 15 Kramer Road, for an accessory apartment, a special permit. We have a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second.
Second from John.
Second from John. All those in favor, roll call vote. Michael Gee?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
David Miller?
Aye.
Okay, do we have? Would we like them to explain to the public what the project is about?
I think so, Mr. Chair. And I believe the architect just, just arrived.
Hello, is our project up?
Yes.
Yes, okay, one second here. Okay, as you, as you remember, we're proposing in addition to an existing structure, a single-family lot in a small suburban neighborhood behind the hospital and across from the fairgrounds. The, the block is all detached, single-family homes, mostly one-story. And we are proposing the same, there was an existing building there. We are keeping the foundation, the basement, and replacing everything above ground with an addition on the back. The configuration allows for an interior courtyard. Our, our client has spent a lot of time in Asia and we are proposing a Japanese-style garden in the middle with all native plant species. Big change here, well first, I corrected the lot coverage since the last meeting, we're now at 20, which is well below the max. The big change here is that the Health Department rejected our proposal for a new septic tank in the front yard, modifying the existing system. And we are now putting a brand-new septic field in the backyard, which, which is enabled by reconfiguring the cottage footprint. So we basically turn the cottage 90 degrees and put that back on the side. This gives us our setback to the septic field and we can put both the new field and the reserved field in the area you see hatched. But we won't have the Health Department approval for some time as it's a brand-new system. For the most part, it's the same project, just with a different footprint. We're still proposing the deck, the garden in the center, steps down to a small bench in the back, planting new trees around the property. And the cottage and the accessories cottage is a one-bedroom, the tiny kitchenette, a living room facing our courtyard and a small bath. We are, this, this, the existing building had three baths and with the inclusion of this cottage, we are at three baths, so we're not increasing the capacity of the septic at all. And the elevations are more or less the same, just with a slightly different configuration. The windows are facing the courtyard, the small windows be facing the street and this trellis structure here, which will have an outdoor, outdoor cooking. And I believe that's it.
Hey, well, if we have members of the public who would like to speak, you can raise your hand so Ryan can see you, or you can send a chat message. Chat box is in middle of the bottom of your screen, you can say I'd like to speak. Or reactions are like waving a hand, click on that and raise your hand like that. And Ryan will see you. So if anyone would like to speak, Ryan will turn on your microphone and let you make a comment. Ryan, do we have anyone who would like to speak?
I saw one person raise their hand, but it went away so fast, I could not. I could not see who raised their hand.
Could that person please raise their hand again?
If they, if they don't know how to do that, they can unmute their microphone and start their video.
You click on the lower left, it says mute mic and stop, stop or start video, click on those and Ryan will let you speak. Maybe you stop, Jess, if you stop sharing your screen for a second, we could see everybody who's out there. See the people, does anyone like to speak?
Oh, someone's trying. Alice's iPad.
Oh, I wasn't really intending to speak. I'm not real familiar with my equipment, but I think it's fine with me, whatever they want to do is fine with me.
Could I just get your full name and address, please?
My name is Alice Virginia Plotnick, P-L-O-T-N-I-C-K. My address is 18 Kramer, C-R-A-M-E-R Road, Rhinebeck, 12572.
Thank you, thank you, Alice.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Alice. Have we, any other neighbor? Or anybody in the village like to make a comment about this? Okay. Do we have a motion to, to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion to close the public hearing.
Michael Gee makes the motion, do we have a second?
Second, John.
John Clark makes the second. Okay, a roll call vote, Michael Gee?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
David Miller?
Aye.
Okay, now, the site plan. So you, you realize that you didn't need the asphalt to be counted in the calculation?
Yes, I took it out.
So you're well under the limit there. So where are we with the Board of Health in terms of moving forward on the project?
They agree that we should put it in the back and our engineer has, has done his calculations and says that it can fit and is now working with the Board of Health to get it approved. So we're asking for conditional approval, obviously based on Board of Health approval for the septic.
Are you losing any like tree screening or anything else back there that would be of consequence? Do you need?
We have a 20-foot setback from the building, so there's still plenty of room for tree plantings.
What about, is there a privacy fence around the back? I can't remember.
There is a fence, it's not a privacy fence, but I don't think it's a sensitive property in back of that. I believe it's a commercial property, actually.
That backs up to that school, right?
Correct.
And there is existing trees, there's a line of existing trees on that back lot line.
Okay.
Any one of the board members have a comment? We've been over several times.
Yeah, I, I, I think they settled everything except the septic at the last meeting, so in terms of, you know, it seems to comply otherwise.
Well, does someone like to make a motion with the conditional condition that we get approval from the Board of Health, obviously can't get a C of O and move in until they get the Board of Health approval, so sort of have a check there. And we've done things like this before. Would someone like to make a motion with the condition of Board of Health approval prior to occupancy?
I'll make the motion, John.
Well, I'll second that, Jeff.
Okay, a roll call vote, Michael Gee?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
David Miller?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is unlimited tomorrow, but they are not ready yet, so we're postponing to the next meeting. We're going to hold that agenda item over. And Elizabeth Petro, Petroopolis, 30 Livingston Street, the proposed pool is also not quite ready, they're having some technical difficulties with the design, and they will be back. So, the next item on the business is Lupy Mango, Wool Store at 71 East Market Street, Suite Number 5, a sign application. Are they here?
They are.
Yes, I'm Lupy Mango.
Okay.
What is your actual name, please?
Oh, my name is Anna, sorry.
Anna, what's your last name, please?
It's, it's Pulver Makher, P-U-L-V-E-R-M-A-K-H-E-R.
Thank you.
So this was an art gallery and now it's a wool store. I guess they're both retail businesses?
Correct.
And we have the sign calculations for it, Ryan, does it, does it fit?
Yes, just give me a minute.
And of course, it's a round sign that always gets us into a little trouble during the calculation of the square footage. But the 30-inch circle, white on black, or is that just?
Um, yes, it's white on black.
Can you bring back the calculations page? Right, yes, okay. So the art gallery, which was the art gallery, then it moved next door to the big, bigger space. So was our resident mathematician probably calculating away at 30, the diameter of 30 inches yields how many square feet? But that is the only sign that will be hanging at that big picture in the window of, of, whoa.
Is there a sign on the door? 30-ish diameter looks to be 4.9 square feet, is that what the application says, Ryan?
You're having a sign on the door?
That's just temporary, I mean, until we have the sign back. And actually, I think, yeah, so, you know, if we get an approval, we'll take the sign out from the door.
So you're just going to have the 30-inch circular black-and-white sign hanging from the porch? And nothing to the door, nothing in the window, except you can have wool in the window.
Well, yeah, I mean, we'll have store hours on the door.
That, that, that doesn't count, that's okay. Anybody have any comments about the sign?
I guess we are concerned with light. Is there lighting?
No, there's no lighting. It's just like a piece of metal with, you know, in black color with white letters.
And that sign is low, it's lower than seven feet. It appears to be up against a column. We're always, and on, and on steps, we're always concerned about low signs and someone getting injured. But
Well, I mean, the photo right now, I mean, it's a mock-up. We were planning to attach it in the same place where the art gallery sign, the sign was attached in exactly the same place. And their sign was, I think, like bigger, or I mean, it was wider.
So it'll be hanging in this spot?
Um, yes, in that spot, but I mean, we can put it higher. Like, I, I found where the old sign was attached, so we were gonna just like use exactly same place where the gallery, where their prior sign was attached.
It would look like with the column there and the two steps in the way that nobody could really walk under it.
Well, I know, I mean, it's on this side, so they can go up the stairs.
Right, and they won't, they won't walk into the sign.
No, they won't walk into the sign. I think maybe in the photo, it's just a little bit hard to see. I mean, the sign will be perpendicular to the building, so.
You can see it from both directions.
Yeah.
We want every, every business to be successful and this location has been, I've seen a lot of turnover because it's on the other side of the parking lot, so a lot of commercial customers don't walk by it. So, you know, I think it's a great fine sign, but to me, I wouldn't know that it's a wool store, I, you know, other than maybe if you could interpret it as a sheet. So, if you have extra sign square footage, you might think about putting something in the window or the door that says, you know, find wool products or something.
Okay.
Identify for the people who don't know what it is, as a new business. But that's just advice. I think the sign is, as you laid it out, is fine.
I'm, I'm pretty sure being that Village Hall is so close, I think in the display window, there are collections of yarn, Anna, am I not mistaken?
Yeah, yeah, that, I mean, that photo was taken a couple of weeks ago, right now, we, you know, in the window, they can see that there is wool inside, so we have like a table inside and it has wool, like balls of yarn and DIY kits, so.
All right. In the future, you're only allowed to have 50% of the glass area of the window with any temporary type paper signs. So, you know, we want to have open storefronts, but I understand that that was before you got the permanent sign up.
Oh, yeah, I mean, and that
It's gone now, right, Anna?
Yeah, yeah, well, the big one in the window, that's gone, that was just during the shipping rules, so people know there's something is going to be there, but right now, there's nothing in the window, in that big window. I mean, there's like a small hiring sign. And, but like that big sign with the girls holding yarn, that one, we took it down.
Hey, does anyone, if no one else has any objection, would someone like to make a motion to approve the sign for Lupy Mango?
I'll make a motion to approve the sign, Suzanne Holzberg.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Michael Gee seconds it. Roll call vote, Michael Gee?
Aye.
Jeff Christensen?
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg?
Aye.
John Clark?
Aye.
David Miller?
Aye.
Well, good luck, we hope you're successful, we hope all of our business are successful. We don't want bacon spoons in the business district.
Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
I can't believe this, but the last item on the discussion is Lydia and Michael Slavy, 25 Mulberry Street. We really here?
We really are here. We've gotten Board of Health approval, we've got our variances approved. We're not late because the entire agenda fell apart. This is, this is like a miracle for everyone involved. Michael's phoning in from Southern Virginia, so that's why he looks like he looks.
She banished, she banished me to the wind and baggo until we get the plans approved.
So, you got the variances, you got the Board of Health approval, you see, you know, the plans. I got a, I got a copy of the big plans and I was looking them over today. It looked pretty good. We don't see, Ryan pointed out that we don't see any landscaping on there, we don't see any lighting on them.
Oh, we do have that. Shoot. I thought we did. Um, okay. Do you want me to zoom in here? Or do you want to see, what, what, what would you like me to do?
Well, do you have a lighting plan, so we can see what that would look like? Do you have landscaping plans? And Michael Gee had a question too.
Okay. The, I, I need to find the lighting plan from Mark. Michael, what's your question?
My condition for approval for demolition was predicated upon saving the brackets on the back part of the house, if you could use them again, or reconstructing them to the same dimensions and looking at the new plans that I saw the other day, there's no visualization from your architect on the Italianate brackets. They've just disappeared.
So we were, I, I know that we were planning on reusing them on the port cochere and on the barn. We're not planning on using them on the rear addition because the rear addition is a slightly less ornate architectural design, and we did that on purpose to show that it's new.
But that wasn't what you said when we were having the discussion of the demolition. I was, you know, I'm not a big fan of taking historic structures down, but if you can make a case to, you know, recreate in kind, that was what I was led to believe. So that seems to be a different.
Oh.
We, we haven't demolished the back of the house. Yeah, that's not the.
Yeah, um, but you know, if you wanted, can I just do a quick screen trail, screen share?
Right ahead, Lydia.
Okay, thanks. Somewhere. So, can you see this?
Yep.
Okay, um, so this is the south side of the house, of the proposed work. This is, this here is, is the front half of the house with all of its detailed hinges and columns and all the rest of it. And this is the same design that we've had for months, where the back half doesn't have those, and you know, we did this on, as I mentioned, we did this on purpose so that it's clear that this is the new, that this is the old part of the house and that this is, you know, complimentary, but not from 1883. This, what we were planning on doing was reusing those brackets from the back porch here on the port cochere, so that, you know, the look of the front half of the house continues and it continues with the original materials. And also, sorry. Um, well, that's not helpful, because now, oh, and also here on the barn.
Yeah, Lydia, you're still looking at the south elevation on your share.
Oh, you are? Okay, all right, I will reshare. Oh, I thought I'd figured out a way to switch documents while still sharing, but okay. Um, so here on the barn, we thought we would, we would reuse them here and then and then once again here. Um, on the port cochere. So, I mean, if you'd rather that we had the back half of the house, you know, if, if you'd rather we sort of, you know, use the old ones and fabricated new ones so that the back half of the house, you know, has the same ornate appearance, then, then, you know, we can certainly discuss that, sure.
I think our main concern is the view from the street. So it looks, I, I, you're making a point that is a big debate. I attended a seminar a couple of years ago about adding on to a historic structure, and do you make it look exactly like the historic structure, so like it's always been there, or do you make it look completely new, so it's clear to everybody that it's not by the historic structure, but it's a new addition? And that's a 50/50 debate among architects around the country.
Well, I'm really glad that we just jumped right into the middle of that.
Well, there is a middle, middle ground in which you make it look compatible and not contrasting. You know, the old theory of architecture was that you make it contrasting so that they would know it's a modern element and not some sort of watered-down version, but I think the more consensus argument at this point is that you make it look complimentary, but still significant enough difference that it's not.
That's kind of where we land. That's sort of where we landed, this compatible, complimentary, but distinct.
Yes. And I, I personally agree that I think the port cochere, because it's visible from the street and particularly would be a better place to use the brackets than on the back of the house, if you have surplus brackets. So that way, from the front, it looks like a complimentary piece. Most people are never going to see the back of the house. But I don't know how many brackets, I don't remember how many brackets you have, and whether you have enough to do both or.
We certainly, we certainly have enough to do the port cochere and the barn. I don't know if we have enough to do the port cochere and the back of the house. You know, obviously, we can fabricate new ones, but that, you know, I don't know if that defeats the purpose of the operation.
I think you're, you're, you know, making the second bay window look like the first bay window, but not have them is the point that John just made and that you guys were talking about, to make sure it's a little different. You don't want to be to fool anybody.
How's Michael feel about that?
Well, I, I can, I, I've heard the arguments and I, I can live with it. I just remember, it kind of brought me back to when we did Buddy Rogers' house, they had really nice crown molding.
Oh, yeah.
And I said, I want that put back, and they, oh, yeah, yeah, and then it disappeared. And then when they got brought back in, then they put up this stinky little thing to satisfy us, but it's not the same. But, you know, I'm fine with it.
I think our main concern always is the view from the street. So, there is some stuff on here, it says no-way maple, sugar maple, rhododendron, hostas ferns, proposed rain garden, proposed Japanese tunifers.
I remember seeing a landscaping plan.
Is that?
You're looking at the sheet that said, that's Plan 102121 Clean Version?
It says.
This one here?
Sheet one, too. Yeah, that one.
Oh.
And you can see below there, it talks about various gardens. Again, the gardens in the back are not as much as a concern as the, as the landscaping out front.
You're not taking down any major trees in the front or anything, right?
Not only the ones that die, which we had two go this spring. But, um, no, we are not planning any, anything like that in the front. There's the, the, the previous owners loved trees and they also loved planting them really close together when they were young. So that is a horticultural problem that I am grappling with at the moment. But, you know, nothing that'll make it look, you know, like a barren desert or anything like that, not at all. And we are currently working on, there's a small hill, a change in elevation. Megan Marks and Bone are at a higher elevation than we are down here, and so we're currently planting sort of screening and, and in order to maintain that hill and also to give us privacy from them, because they have a pool right here, we have a pool. and, and in order to maintain that hill and also to give us privacy from them because they have a pool right here. We have a pool right here. So it's all a little bit much. Um, Peter and Jerry next door, um, we're also planting sort of a, a tri-story garden over here. Obviously the maples are the top story and then we have a variety of Japanese maples and magnolias and um those beautiful trees that bloom in the spring and they're white and sometimes they're pink. Um, and then, and then on the bottom level azaleas, rhododendrons and all the rest of it. So, so this, this, this is a growing uh fence between us. Um, and then obviously some evergreens too for some, especially evergreens right here on the side of the port cochere so that um, you know, there, there's year-round screening there. Um, so I'm working with our neighbors on that and everybody seems, you know, delighted, so.
And you front, you don't have much of a front yard. It's a very deep property, but not a wide property and a lot of it is driveway.
Yeah, right. We have, we have a huge um maple, we have a huge sugar maple right here. And then um a series of sort of screenings down here. Um, there's a cypress, there's a weeping something, there's um something else here. And then there's about four or five trees that march along here as well with some mature um hydrangeas, hydrangea trees back here. Um, and then the garden here is, is generally open. There's a weeping red bud right here. Um, and then there's a, a hedge of mature yews and right in front of the porch that we're in the process of trying to shorten a little bit, but as you know, it takes years to do that.
Are there any, any additional lighting going on there to uh?
Um, in the front of the house? No. Um, in the rear, the only lighting we have is um.
Hold on, Lydia. Are we, sconces on the front door on either side of the front door?
Oh yeah, we did want to do that. All right, hold on, let me stop, let me do this.
Sorry.
Sorry. This is my husband is here. Um, okay. Um, as, as you know, we had talked about, so the only main difference here is obviously the view of the porker share, but there's also turning the single door with the side pane of windows into a double door um and keeping the original transom window. Um, we have talked about, there is a very bright borderline garish um hanging pendant light here. We've actually talked about replacing it with two sconces, much, much softer sconces on either side of the door. Um, we had a long conversation about having them be gas powered. We decided against it. Um, it's not on the drawing, so that's disappointing. Um, and then the back lighting is just, sorry, I'm gonna find this now. Um, um, goose, goose neck lights um that face down and don't splatter light um over the garage door. And then um two lights underneath the um the breezeway. So inside here over the doors, but not, but they're inside, they're not outside. Um, and there is a lighting, Ryan, did, did that lighting plan not make it?
I don't think so.
Okay. This is an example of the lighting, but it's also, it's not great. Um, because we couldn't find one that actually we really liked the look of um that also had all of the requirements needed for, for you all. So, you know, this isn't great, but um it'll definitely be something like this, just a gooseneck over um and no more than thirteen watts over the garage door. I mean, I don't like this one. It is not historic. It doesn't look attractive. Um, but Mark Gruminski told me that I needed to show you something that had, you know, the amount of light that it spat out. Um, this is where we are. Then the fence around the pool is going to be cast iron.
Anyone have comments on the plans?
Oh, there's a lighting section in the code that just makes sure that all the light is focused downward and shielded from any light spill onto your neighbors?
Yes, we are, we are, we are, we, we will make sure of that. Um, I'll, I'll.
The only other comment I have is can you scan to the left there so I can see the driveway?
Yes.
Right now you have pavers and here it says limits of existing gravel drive. Are you switching your driveway around?
No. Um, that was a miscommunication with the um, with the engineer. Um, we're basically leaving this as is. Um, what we may do is swap out the red pavers for um ones that are the same color as bluestone. Um, but no, we're going to keep the pavers and then pass the port cochere. That's when it'll convert into um a gravel just track back here until we get to the gravel in front of the garage.
So Lydia, just re- remind me, do those pavers go from sort of your driveway straight out to Mulberry Street?
Yes, with like a little, with like a little.
Okay, so when you guys change the driveway and the pavers, you definitely will have to continue the sidewalk?
Yeah.
So either right now, unless the planning board gives you a conditional approval or, or condition of approval is either going to have to be bluestone or concrete. So I don't know if you want to keep in continuity with your neighbors and have the bluestone or if you want to do the concrete or if you had something else in mind, you'd have to get um conditional approval from the board.
What's there now? It says slate, is that bluestone?
It's, it's um reddish pavers that go right to Mulberry Street. There's no sidewalk, but it is a paved surface over the, where the sidewalk is.
Yeah, there's the, the pavers continue down to this line and then this is asphalt. Um, because they, 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 when they repaved Mulberry Street, they made Mulberry Street narrower and so suddenly we, we now have an asphalt little.
It's your, it's your, it's your apron. That's what it's.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ryan. We now have an asphalt apron courtesy of the village. Um, so, okay, so if we do change these papers from the red ones to anything else, we have to make sure that the sidewalk itself is either concrete or bluestone?
Yes.
Yes, as continuous.
Okay, all right.
If, if you want to leave it alone, you can leave it alone, but um, but if you're going to change it, then, then the sidewalk should link up with the other um pieces of sidewalk.
Okay. We like the look of um that, the, the, the recent renovation on Chestnut Street. Um, uh, with the big garage to the right of the house. Um, what they did is they have bluestone, but they, they set the bluestone and concrete for their um driveway.
Yeah.
Which.
You can put the bluestone on dirt, but when you get to the, the car part, you've got to have.
Yeah, it's got to be a little bit more secure.
No crack.
Right. So I don't know, we'll see. I don't.
The driveway is not supposed to be any more than eighteen feet wide. Now, the one on Chestnut is too wide, but uh it's sort of slipped by whoever. I'm not sure if it was us or the inspector, but um, you know, we, we like, you know, narrow driveways at the throat. They could widen up when they get further on.
Yep.
So have a heavy driveway frontage in front of the house, so.
Well, this will actually, I mean, just given we're, you know, just given this, we might narrow it up a little bit just along the house, but you know, we'll see.
Yeah, it doesn't look like it probably less than eighteen feet anyway, because the only dimension on there is twenty-two and it's, it's for a longer piece, so.
Yeah. Oh yeah, it's definitely not wider than eighteen feet.
Okay.
I guess things look pretty good to me. Any, any other comments from the board? No comments?
Um, I think it's a nice, I'm, I'm happy. I think it's nice.
I think the only condition I would add is that all the lighting is downward focused, doesn't reflect on the neighbor's property or the, up into the night sky. So that whatever fixtures they decide on are compliant with that condition.
Well, I, I, I never uh thought I would ever get to say this, but I have, I have a motion to approve the site plan for twenty-five dollars subject to the, the uh, the lighting comments that John just made.
And if, and if the lighting, just so you know, if the lighting's under six hundred lumens, which is normally what a porch light is, forty watts usually. Um, it doesn't have to be downward focused. You know, you can have like a low watt porch light. Um, that's not a problem, but if there's any of the gooseneck or any of those things, they should be focused downwards, anything that's sort of not underneath the house.
Okay.
Or, or has a more than a forty watt bulb in it.
Okay.
I think it's forty watt, isn't it? Six hundred lumens, whatever six hundred lumens is.
My, I, I have lanterns and there are four watt bulbs in there, but they're bright, so.
You don't, you don't need much in the middle of the night.
And the LED lighting is a whole different ballgame.
Yeah.
So would someone like.
Put that in a motion that uh to approve the site plan as proposed with that one condition about lighting being downward focused and no light trespass or glare onto the neighbor's property.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Jeff.
Okay, roll call vote. Jeff Christensen.
Aye.
Suzanne Holzberg.
Aye.
John Clark.
Aye.
Michael G.
Aye.
David Miller, aye. Well, go, go and like Lydia builds her dream house. They made a movie about that.
Holy crap.
Thank you all so much and I appreciate your patience during this entire process.
That was quick.
Yeah.
Yes, I, I, I never thought we'd get to there. Um, so we have a discussion item. Um, Warren is here for somewhere.
He is.
There he is. About uh forty-six Livingston Street. I'm in a badly Mulberry's side garage. Just a.
Okay, uh, Brian, are you able to put up what I sent you or do I need to share my screen?
Well, I can share the screen, Warren. Just give me a second to uh get into uh the file for.
Sure.
Yep.
Forty-six.
So forty-six is the second empire house with a tower um sort of diagonally across from Lydia and Michael's house, except there's isn't on the corner, but it's close. Um, so it's on the southwest corner of um Mulberry and Livingston. It's kind of a blue gray now with white trim, but it's, it's a tower that it's most um note, noted for. It's one of um the few iconic second empire, you know, um French style houses in the village. The Parisi house um on the hill next to Star Library being the second, and then there's another, there are a couple of others with that look. Um, including a kind of a sweet one-story, one of the mansard right on South Street, just down from uh Jeff and Linda Christensen's house. But in any event, um, this house is um one of the most photographed in the village and the, the carriage house um around the corner from it that faces on to um Mulberry, almost across from David Miller. Um, the evidence suggests that it might have been built a little earlier because it looks like it might have originally been a, a gable shaped building with just triangular gable um running um east-west and then at some point um it was renovated to sort of match the house. Um, you, you can tell by looking at it from the street that the, one of the garage, the garage doors were changed and various other things were changed, but nonetheless, um, it is a very um significant surviving carriage house um in the village of Rhinebeck that was um heavily reworked to match the adjacent house, which was built, I think about eighteen eighty-five or so. So that, that, the, the carriage house has not benefited from um the, all the work that's been done to the house over the few years, including um, you know, complete insulation, replacing of siding, repair of roofing and the um, the side that's up against the, the former doctor's office immediately to its south of the block, a white painted concrete block building right next to it, it has had a lot of deterioration. It's a south side. Um, there's a hole in the roof. Um, it's, it's, you can walk through there, but it's, it's tight. Um, but both the roof and the wall has deteriorated substantially. Um, and so while it's been, it was painted the last time Colton and Gene Johnson tainted the house before they sold it. Um, it, it hasn't had any work done recently. Owners would like to um, to save it and repair it. Uh, but needless to say, there's a significant investment required for this. Um, the slate roof, uh, which we, we'd like to salvage and, and replace with slate where necessary. Keep as much as possible, replace with matching slate where possible. Um, we've also looked at, at um simulated slate, which really is not much less defensive than the real slate. Um, and if we can get the real thing, that, that's the choice, but, but there's quite a bit of structural work that needs to be done. On the second floor, there are two diagonal braces that might have been added sometime after the mansard was put on there to try to uh keep it from sagging at the midpoint of the long walls, but the one on the south side snapped quite some time ago, so it's really not providing any bracing. And so that's one reason why that whole wall, that the roof is sagged inward, the wall is bowed out. Um, and again, the, the structure is kind of standing together by habit on that side. So our, our first goal with the, with the building um was to look at how we could stabilize it um and, and get it back to um to its original shape so we could repair it, replace the roof and so forth. Um, and to that end, um, I had Marty Rosenblum and Matt Alexander, who was in charge of restoration and repairs up at um the uh that, I'm sorry, the house in Catskill, the Cole House, Thomas Cole House in Catskill, after a lot of work at Bard College, um, walked through the building with me a couple of times and discussed um appropriate options for, for stabilizing this building. Um, while, you know, minimally intruding on the historic character. And so we came up with a system of, of additional taking that the concept of the, of the diagonal brace, which is good in principle to support the upper ridge on this um and, and doing a series of them along the south wall to stiffen that wall, because that's the, the one that deteriorated the most to allow us to repair it. Um, but anyway, that's just kind of a general introduction. Um, so the first, the first goal is to stabilize and, and, and repair the exterior and, and get the building watertight. Um, but to do that, as you say, is a significant investment and the price, the prices for the roofing alone have been maybe a hundred and fifty thousand and up. Um, but then there's, there's the other work that needs to be done, structural work. So in order to make this viable, the owners, Shadine and Mark Israel's have looked into uh New York State Historic Preservation Tax Credits um because they're designed for projects like this. And, and they were told by the state that um that actually if, if they could use this for a commercial use, and I'll describe that in a minute, um, there's more money available and it might make sense. Um, commercial use in this case would simply need a rental apartment upstairs. Um, and so, and so um there's a second set of drawings that I provided you. This is the as-built, there were the existing conditions, I should say. Um, and you can see there the, the stable stalls in the back and then what was the carriage house facing Mulberry Street and then a, a cross aisle with a very steep stair that goes now, right now from the, the ground floor to the, the second floor. The thought is to um keep all the exterior openings as they are to use um one of the stable doors to enter um to a little foyer that would take you stair up to the apartment. Um, and then to keep the downstairs, the rest of the downstairs as storage um and, and potentially garage space for the owners. Um, but that, that would allow us to, that allow the owners to apply for a um, a commercial tax credit simply because they would have a rental apartment upstairs. So that, that's kind of the uh, the, the, the thinking here and I wanted to just discuss it with the planning board. I, I know, you know, accessory apartments are encouraged in the code, but there are conditions um and, and concerns with all of them. Um, I had put together a little zoning analysis that I shared with um Ken McLaughlin and Ryan last week and I don't know if that was provided to you as well on the board. Um, but I, I went through, there are the obvious things like all of these outbuildings and in historic lots in the village, it sits right on the property line. Um, in, in two cases, you know, uh, on the street as well as on the, on the south property line. Um, so right there, it doesn't comply with the minimum setbacks that are required in the. So right there, it doesn't comply with the minimum setbacks that are required in the code of 10 feet. And then of course, the, the size of the building, it's an existing structure. So the size is the size. Interestingly, when we go through the requirements for accessory apartments, as you know, there's a minimum and maximum size, but there's also the sort of 25% of principal dwelling. Well, this is a fairly large principal dwelling for Rhinebeck. So actually we're, we're pretty close to that 25%, but we're larger than the 750 square foot maximum. So we would need a variance for the size of the apartment, simply based on the size of the second floor of the building. The other choice, of course, is to wall off parts of it, which is certainly feasible, but not a really very practical way of treating space. It's, it's, you know, like every, like everything else, codes are established with certain general principles in mind. And, and then there are standards which are appropriate, but at the same time, we always have to look at the particular circumstances of each, if each application in each building. And given that, that the intent in the code, one of the intents of the code is to maintain carriage houses and barns and other things, contributing structures, conversion to active allowable uses, such as an apartment, should be encouraged, including consideration of any reasonable area variances. So it's up to you to decide whether either these are reasonable area variances and, and whether it goes to the zoning board with a recommendation from you or whether the planning board has any power, in this case to, to waive conditions and you'll tell me that. But that's basically the outline of the plan. This is not a formal application yet, but based on feedback from you, we can put together a, a formal application. So we can move this forward.
Oh, this, you know, this, this building and of course, the garage are listed as critically important structures to the village.
Right.
We have, we did something on Oak Street a year or two ago, which had greater numbers than this in terms of the variance for the size. And you only, only miss it on one. Not the size of the percentage of the house, because the house is a gigantic house. You're only missing it in terms of the 750.
Right.
Anything like.
And the, you also have a front and side setback variance, I would imagine.
If, if you're not touching the building in terms of moving it or demolishing it, haven't we said that was existing in the past?
It is an existing non-conforming building because of the setbacks, but if you're intensifying the uses, I think according to the code, you would have, still have to get a variance. But I would support it. And because it's an existing non-conforming building, I think you would have a very good case. You can't ask them to move the building and the second floor is. It makes sense to make it something that's viable to help the restoration of the building. And that sentence in the code, I was the one who proposed that sentence because I really don't want to see carriage houses lost because they're set too close to the property line or because they, you know, don't have a viable use or whatever, you know, we're losing too many of the bards and the carriage houses in the village, I think, through neglect. And this is a way of making that look as nice as the house looks right now. I would support it. And I think you, I think, you know, you could go to the building inspector and get a ruling on the area variances. But I think you have a good case and I would, I would support a positive recommendation myself.
Yeah, we have to consult the zoning enforcement officer and/or our zoning attorney. But if we did have the power to make this determination, since I think I, I mean, the other board members can comment, but we certainly want to preserve as many of these buildings as we can. And, and waterproofing it, fixing the roof and stabilizing the building is a fabulous project. And we certainly want apartments as well. And how does the other board members feel about this?
I, I would say I, I would be in favor of this proposal at this point and the economic output that they have to do to, to basically get that building back, you know, I, it's like they're willing to do it. I think we need to kind of help and get that along because I remember when Michael Byrd had his, his, uh, his carriage house and we went and looked at it was like it had been left, you know, to deteriorate for too long. And it was like, it was, it was unsafe and you could just kind of see where this is. If we don't let them do this, you know, we could lose it. So I would be in favor of it.
Jeff, Suzanne?
I agree. I think it's a great idea. Certainly like to see more apartments in the village anyway. And it's like a good use. And preserving the building is obviously desirable.
I, I agree. This is, uh, this is, this is, well, it's, it's tired looking, but it is one of the more beautiful carriage houses in the village. There aren't that many left. There are, uh, if, if these, if these owners are willing, as you said, to put in the economic thing, I, I think it's a, it's a terrific thing. I agree with John Clark. You know, we may have to suggest a setback variance, but I cannot imagine that would be a problem. And in fact, neither do I think it's a problem to allow the 1108 square foot, which would be in excess of the 750 max on an ADU. I think this is a great opportunity for us to save a terrific piece of history in this, in this village. I, I support it.
So Ryan, I'd like to get an opinion from Ken and perhaps from our, our attorney. To see what, what they think if we do have to go through the code, the code is asking for this, we're asking for this. We have to go through the formality. If we do, it's fine. We can make a recommendation to the zoning appeals. But one, the side yard, you know, the, the variances, we aren't touching the building, we're not moving it. I don't know if we're intensifying the use. It was a garage, now it's a probably an apartment. I don't know. I'd like, I'd like Ken to weigh in on this and I'd like turn it away on us and see if we have the power to make this determination if we have to go for an official variance for the square footage of the building itself.
Sure, Chair. I can definitely refer this both to legal and Ken, both to weigh in. Warren, we're probably going to have to have an additional discussion about escrow.
Sure.
So we don't have to go searching for funds for the legal referrals and responses. I'm just thinking time wise and making sure potentially if we can get you back in front of Ken this Thursday, possibly on the early part of his office hours, just to try to re revisit what the board has discussed tonight concerning the different side and rear yard variances. So he's clear on what he needs to address and provide to the board, but we can sort of transfer that to an email back and forth, an email communication.
Okay.
December's another one of those weird months.
Right.
There, the third Thursday is the 16th before our meeting on the 21st, which we were debating having or not, because it's so close to Christmas. So if we wanted to get them before the CBA and the 16th, we have to have a presentation in two weeks or on, what is it? This December 7th. So I would have enough time to make a notification. Otherwise it's going to have to wait till January. So why don't we see how it goes with them?
And obviously too, we don't have to rush this because there's going to be an additional public hearing with you guys for the accessory.
Right.
Dwelling unit. So.
We wouldn't have. Yes, we don't need the legal review unless necessary.
Right.
He's running up the bill, you know, if the
Right.
zoning enforcement officer feels confident one way or the other, let it go with that and they'll bring in legal unless he asked for it.
Right.
If the board is comfortable with that, we can go that route.
I, I, I think we trust Ken to be able to advise us and Warren what to do. But certainly I'd like to, I don't know how long it takes to get this project underway, but you should try to not have to go through another winter with snow on that roof.
They, they have put, they have had a tarp put over that area that's fairly secure, but it's only good for so long, obviously.
I think one of the other things, Warren, too, that we chatted about in your first meeting with Ken was the parking layout, because currently the concept was to park, create parking where the owners park. And I know that was possibly, you know, an item for discussion. So next time, if that can be delineated a little bit more.
Because we, we had, when it was a bed and breakfast supposedly, we put in a large parking area behind the carriage house and they took that away to put a garden back. And so we need to make sure there's enough spots in that gravel parking area or there were spots in the garage.
There's three spots in the garage. Yeah.
We have. Yeah. And there are three spots in the gravel parking area and theoretically the house needs two and the apartment needs one, but obviously this can, we can continue to discuss what the board would like to see there.
What about the garage doors? Can they be saved? What were your plans for that?
Well, the garage doors have to be repaired. If you look at them closely, the one on the left is a little different from the others. And I think it's, I would suppose that originally there was, there was a carriage house door under the upper door and maybe another one off to the side. But, but, but as it is now, again, they're, they're slightly narrower and a little bit different on the left. But the intent would certainly be to, to make them all repaired and functional.
But they, but they slide side to side. They don't.
No, I think.
They raise?
Basically, they swing.
They swing?
Yeah. Yeah, they're not bypass doors.
You have to manually open and close them.
You, right.
Garage door opener. All right.
But well. Warren, as, as, as this project goes forward, you'll also include septic considerations for the addition?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody have any other questions?
Is, is it possible that he can go ahead with repairs before the winter, even if, even if the accessory apartment problem takes a little longer? Seems to be just for stabilization. You should be able to do whatever you want as soon as you want.
Yeah, I would think some, some of the work inside could be done. The roofing itself would wait till spring. But, but any, any interior work to structurally support it and get it ready for roofing could, we, we just have to file a building permit for that. But that was the purpose of the repair and stabilization drawings we prepared anyway.
Yeah, the only complication might be if you go into tax credit, you might want to get all the approvals before you do any work. So you can.
Right. And that's another point. Thank you, John. Everything we do that, that we're going to try to apply for a tax credit for has got to be reviewed by the state historic preservation office. In addition to the drawings, I've got to fill out sheets that detail each aspect of the historic structure, the windows, the, the details of the cornice, you know, the, the actual slate shingles and so forth. And ship has got to review it and sign off on that. So there's, there's a process involved there too. It's just the owners are a little reluctant to embark on all that unless they think that they're going to get their approval. So.
Yeah.
It's always expected to ask forgiveness and ask for approval. Doesn't work that way. It won't give you money afterwards.
Right.
Have to have the state involved, approved, sign off on it to get your money afterwards done. So it doesn't work the other way.
That's right.
This is a great project, Warren. It really is very, very important to the historic integrity of the village. So we, we applaud the owners for doing this. So we'll look forward to hearing what Ken has to say. I guess Ryan can email us with his determination. And then we can move forward from there. Site, a site, a, a official site plan submission as possible. Good work. It looks great.
Very good. Thank you.
So we will see you tentatively on November 16th, Warren.
Sure. You'll just give me a time.
Yes.
Is it going to be blue?
Are you going to paint it?
I imagine eventually it'll match the house. Yeah.
All right. So, uh, thank you, Warren.
Complimentary color might be better than a matching color.
You're right. Complimentary. I agree.
Oh, yeah. San Francisco blue. I don't think anybody ever appreciated. But we don't regulate paint colors.
Right. It's better than the brown that was on there before.
That was dreary. I know.
All right. We don't have any minutes yet, right, Ryan?
Um, no, we don't.
I wanted to have a little comment, but I, I, I was reading the rules and I don't think we have a justification for ending the meeting and stop the recording and going to executive session to discuss a couple of things that, the things I wanted to talk about are not, I don't think they're justified in the code, New York State code for a reason, for a I want to talk a little bit about the broken center concept, but we'll have to wait on that. By the way, someone did ring my bell at three o'clock today and said, hi, we're having a, a, a public meeting on reuse of the broken center. I can give you a flyer of what, what we're thinking about. And I said, I know about it. No, thank you. Well, we hope to see you on Thursday night. So there, canvassing the village, soliciting people to come on Thursday night.
So are you saying, David, what's the point about executive session? We'll have one or we won't have one or what's?
We have, I'd like to have a little bit of discussion about some concepts here, but I don't think that, that it's, you know, personnel issues, budget issues.
I think, Mr. Chair, I think that's more appropriate with a meeting with our liaison, not during a public meeting right now, being that it's personnel issues. I, I don't feel it's appropriate.
Our attorney, executive session with our attorney to get, you know, legal advice about things.
But. I think so too. And I, you know, being the clerk, I'm not prepared for this at all. So this is kind of new, a new territory for me. So I would respectfully ask that if there's anything executive session that you would want to go with the board members, that I first consult with our planning and zoning attorney on the process via Zoom. So when we're on this platform, so.
We'll just wait until what happens then.
Well, just to, let me, let me just test, test the question here and see if that's appropriate. I wanted to ask, for example, we have, the recordings are happening now because we're on Zoom. And, and Zoom gets recorded. That's easy. When we went back for three sessions in a row in person, I recorded those and edited, you know, put titles on them and made sure that the sound was, was clear when people were speaking, but I shouldn't really have to do that. Why? When would we talk about, I guess a question for Lydia, having Panda record the planning board meetings, just like they're recording the trustee and mayor meetings? Why?
So Lydia, do you want to jump in about this or I can share my two cents?
Um, go up, go ahead, Brian.
So, um, I asked the very same question, Jeff. Rewind back to when the pandemic first started, way back in March of last year.
March of 462 B.C.
Uh, right. And that long, long time ago in the forgotten age. And I did ask, and right now the village of Rhinebeck's contract with Panda is to record one meeting per month. And that is the, the only one in that contract is the mayor and the trustee board meeting. Each one. Other than that, we would have to pay Panda each meeting. We would have to pay the person and the staff. And at that time, our budget, it was not budgeted in our department, in each department, it wasn't allocated to pay the camera person and whatever else. in our department, in each department, it wasn't allocated uh, to pay the camera person and whatever else. Um, it comes with, with that. Um, so at that time, it, it wasn't allocated, and we obviously went with Zoom. So it wasn't further explored. Um, but if Albany doesn't act, and the governor doesn't act come January of next year, I mean, obviously, it's, it's something that should be re- revisited, because once again, we're gonna be left sort of at that place of going back to in-person meetings.
Yeah, I, I agree, and, and I guess my question is, when is it appropriate to revisit? Would it have to happen? I don't know what the budgeting cycle is for the village.
So Lydia, it's over, right?
Yeah, our, our fiscal year is um, June to May, so um, if we want to talk about adding Panda twice a month to planning board meetings, you know, we can talk about that in this, the budget cycle is usually in the spring. I mean, it's always in the spring, not usually in the spring. Um, but, but what, what question are we trying to answer?
Well, I, I don't think, I, I, I think it's what I asked before, that when the John Fenton issue was settled, um, the planning board should get some of that money back to it for more top, more hours on the zoning enforcement officer.
Right, okay, yeah, okay. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, I'm, I'm just gonna ask you to stop right now, because that is appropriate material for an executive session.
Okay.
Um, so, you know.
Well, then, just to, just to your, to answer your question, to clarify, I guess my question, what do we need to do to get the planning board meetings uh, recorded and available on Panda like they are for all of our neighboring uh, municipalities? It's kind of frankly, it's kind of silly that, that it doesn't happen, and, and it should happen, so, you know.
I was chairman of the Panda Board for several years. We worked on the contract and the deals to this thing, and extra meetings are a hundred dollars.
I think that's changed, David.
I haven't been on the board for a couple of years. What is it now?
I
I don't know, but I know
I don't know, but I want to say it's two hundred plus. If I was to take a guess, David, it's two hundred plus.
I think the issue was that uh, most board meetings are like an hour or two, and Gary's board, board meetings tended to run for longer than that, and there was a, you know, uh, the uh, cameraman wanted additional pay filming some of the longer meetings, and they tried, they were working on that when I left the Panda Board. I will find out. I'll talk to Ken, you know. It's not a lot of money. It's not like it's thousands.
Yeah, it's, it's not a lot of money.
I mean, like, and, yeah, and, and we should definitely, I mean, if you want to have an executive session about this, call it right now, David, and we can talk about budgeting and, and, and staffing issues, which is totally appropriate for an executive session. Um, if you'd rather wait until, you know, we actually have some answers on some of the questions that are outstanding, then we can also wait for that moment. Um.
What is the governor's thing? I mean, it's been, the, the reason why I'm recording it for the last year, you know, is because of Zoom, Ryan pushes a button, and we have it, you know, we're done, for free.
I believe, David, the press release back in June stated, January fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the uh, Governor Hokel's, whatever you call it, continuance of the emergency of the open meetings law, use of virtual plat- platform expires. I mean, I don't have the exact language in front of me.
Second meeting would be January eighteenth, so we have a couple of months to think about this.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have to solve it right now, but I think that um, it should be something that's discussed, you know, apart, you know, with the trustee, with the mayor, with however the budgeting goes, because these are public meetings. All of our neighbors do it. It's really kind of silly that we don't have this available to our public, and, and we should. Um, so for example, we're gonna have the uh, the thing that's happening Thursday for the uh, school, the, the public comment session, and Panda's gonna be recording that, right?
That's coming out of the mayor and the trustees' budget.
Yeah, so that, so Panda's gonna be recording that because it's a mayor and trustees' budget, but we don't have a budget.
No, I, you know, you, 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 you do have a budget. There is a budget for the planning, building, and zoning office. Um, you know, Panda meetings are currently not part of that budget, but, you know, we can always do mid-year switches and all of the rest of it, so, but um, let's, uh, you know, there's, there's all sorts of questions layered into this conversation. Um, and I, I would be much more comfortable having this conversation inside an executive session. Um, so, you know, if you'd like, we can, David, if you'd like, you can schedule that for the next meeting. You can schedule it for the first meeting in December, I, you know, whatever you want to do. Um, and I'll, I'll make sure to have answers to costs and, you know, how to go about doing this um, then.
That's fine. I, I think it's a really basic thing that we should be doing.
Maybe another month or so, and then we'll schedule an executive session to discuss.
Just so, just so I know, for this Thursday's meeting, um, which you mentioned is gonna be the planning board and the trustees and the mayor. It's a public comments section.
So, yeah, um, oh, yep.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that if you wanted to make a, you don't have to sit up there with us. Um, I know that there was some discomfort expressed by some of you about that. Um, you also don't have to come. Um, if you are interested in making a comment as a member of the public, I mean, you are all five of you members of the public in addition to your work as the planning board. I know, no, you're not. Um.
No, no, I, I'm not gonna make a comment on. No, but
Fine line, he's walking a fine line.
No, no, and, and
A fine line, but you are allowed to have opinions as a resident of the village.
Understood, yeah, understood.
You know, so
I, well, I think that makes sense, because I, perhaps I misunderstood. I thought that the reason we would be sitting up there together is because we would then go into some uh, workshop, and the planning board and the trustees and the mayor would have some collaboration discussion, some work, executive workshop, but
I, I, I'm trying to figure out the legality of how to, of how to do that, to be perfectly honest. Um, because I do, I, I am trying, I mean, you know, and I don't mind if the public knows this, but like, my goal with this whole question of the Father Brogan Center is, you know, we've heard from the developer, we're going to hear from the public, we're gonna keep the public comment session sort of open, so I mean, I'm already getting emails. Um, I, I plan on continuing to get emails after Thursday. Um, and, you know, I would like to have a working session with probably two members of the planning board, two members of the zoning board, myself, someone, maybe Gary, maybe someone else on the, on the board of trustees who's interested, and, and start to hammer out some of these issues, because um, you know, Brogan is not the only building in a residential district that is, you know, big, for lack of a better way to describe it. Um, you know, we have exist, like the Montgomery, not Montgomery, the Thompson House, you know, has twelve apartments in it. Um, and it's in the residential district. It's grandfathered in, you know, so it's like, there's a lot of the, this is not the only example of what we're dealing with. It's just the first one that we've had to deal with under the current zoning code. Um, and, you know, I'm very curious as to how we can be thoughtful and creative about how to resolve this problem, resolve whatever the problem is. Um,
Okay, so we'll
You know, and, and
We'll hear from you.
Yeah, um, so, you know, you'll hear from me.
Right, but we're not gonna, it's not gonna be, we're all sitting together, and then after the meeting, we go into an executive session and have, so, so like you say, there's really no need for us to be sitting there. In fact, we can just watch the Panda recording, if we, if we want to uh,
Yeah, if you don't, if you don't want to come at all, yeah.
But to have a discussion with the board, it's gonna have to be like Noah's Ark, two by two.
Yeah.
Two by two, we can't go um,
Alright.
More than that, it becomes pub, you know, three people of a board is now as public as a public hearing.
Yep. And then it stops being a working session.
Okay, thanks, thanks for that. I just I, I, I'm, I'm willing to continue if I have to recording the in-person planning board sessions, because I think it's important to have them available, but I wouldn't want to do that for long. I just wanted to say that.
No, I, I, I appreciate that, and I do think that one of the reasons why she made it expire on January fifteenth, is I, I know that the, I know that Albany is actually working on the open meetings law in general. Um, and the fact that, you know, open the last time the open meetings law was amended was in two thousand and one or two thousand and two, before this technology wasn't even invented. So, you know, I know that they're thinking about it up there. Um, and uh, you know, who knows? Maybe they're hoping to have a resolution by January fifteenth.
This is, Zoom, I mean, it's great to be in person, but Zoom is so, we have public hearings on Zoom. People make comments, we get it recorded. We say, wait a second, let's see what it looks like. Somebody goes to Google Earth and brings up a picture of what the building looks like. It's so, you know, it's very, we've gotten so good at this. It's, it's smoother, more uh, you know, Ryan, go, and you run into your office and look for that plan that we, that we did a couple of years ago and see what it says.
But I, I mean, as you know, the, the village trustees don't like Zoom either, which is why we're still in person, so, um, you know, it, it, it's there are advantages to Zoom. There are also disadvantages to people who don't have, you know, who are, who are not computer savvy. Um, so, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages to all of this. Um.
And then it also leads to the bigger discussion of a hybrid platform.
Oy.
And
Oy.
Bringing, bringing Village Hall to a more twenty-first century technology. I mean, the newest thing in there is a flat-screen television, and even flat-screen TVs are considered ancient, so.
Well, when that discussion comes up, I can tell you what we've been doing at the Board College Lifetime Learning Institute um, to do hybrid training, and even using the five thousand dollar Bard classroom hybrid technology, it's been a real challenge, but we can I'll be happy to talk to you about our experience there if anybody wants to offline.
And Jeff and I are very close to making it sort of work at Village Hall for storehouse society programs, but it's still a one-way, you can only chat back. You can't have the person appear on the screen like they are now and make comments. They can just chat back. Getting them to talk to you is something that requires a lot of money.
Uh, well, and a lot of time and management. I did one on uh, Saturday night with the Red Hook Kuanis Club um, Best Citizen Awards, where we had twenty-nine people on Zoom and about twelve or fifteen people at the hall in Red Hook, and we pulled it off, but it took a lot of work.
Mike Frasier's done, done some rotary meetings, I think, struggling with.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking, I mean, the village, we're, we're part of what we'd like to use the American Rescue Act's money for is some work on Village Hall. Um, primarily the HVAC system to make the um, circulation better and cleaner, um, the air cleaner. But, you know, there are, there are lots of ways that we could make that big meeting room up there more technologically adept at managing meetings like this. Um, but, you know, that is all to be seen. Um, so that is all to be seen.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Jeff.
We have a second. I'll make a second. All those in favor, we don't need to do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Alright, we'll see you in two weeks.